Welcome. This is the time and place for the May 4th Planning Commission meeting. May I have a roll call?
Planning Commissioners Astorian, Landrigan, Lee, Manukian, and Shabazian.
Do you want to read about the report of the posting of the agenda for me?
I would be happy to.
Thank you.
The agenda for this meeting was posted on Wednesday, April 27, 2016, on the bulletin board outside City Hall and on the city's website.
Thank you. Mr. Manukian, do you mind leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in its hands.
Thank you. Will you let the minutes record that Mr. Astorian has arrived? Thank you. May I have a motion for the approval of the minutes if you so wish?
So moved.
Any objections?
Second.
All right. The minutes are approved. This is the time for oral communications. Do I have any? I have none up here. So seeing none, we will move to item six, which is zoning appeals, of which we also have none. Continuing on the agenda. Item seven, we have no old business, so we will move straight to new business. Item one is the general plan amendment, case number PGPA 1603-503. Zone change. Case number PGMA 1603-502. It has a request to be continued. May I have a motion to that?
So moved.
May I have a second?
Second.
Actually, I made a mistake, Madam Chairman. The motion needs to be that I move that the matter be continued to May 18, 2016.
Without further public notice?
Without further public notice.
And a second stand? Thank you. All in favor? Do we need a roll call? Let's do a roll call, please.
Planning Commissioners Astorian.
Aye.
Manukian.
Aye.
Shabazian.
Aye.
Chairperson Landrigan.
We'll go to item number two, subdivision of land, tentative tract map number 63783. Time extension request. I want all of the planning commissioners to know there's a new staff report, Mr. Astorian, to please replace the one you received with the one we have now. Who is the planner on this?
Here I am.
Oh, hello.
Hi.
Sorry. Please come for... Start the presentation.
Sure, thank you. Commissioners, this case before you is stated is an extension for a tentative tract 63783. Location is 1059 through 1063 Elm Avenue. And as noted, you do have a new staff report before you, and I will clarify as to why that has occurred. But first, just to give you a little history, background history on this case. This case was actually... It did receive an approval for a tentative tract, obviously. That's why there's an extension before you, back in 2006, March 13 of 2006. Ten years has gone by, and the applicant's here in the audience, so he will explain a little more in detail as to why, within these 10 years, he has not been able to complete the project and why he's requesting the extension. I did include, though, however, attachments in your packet submitted by the applicant regarding the time extension and an explanation, a brief explanation as to why he was unable to complete the project in a timely fashion. They did obtain at one point a building permit. They had a design review approval. Those expired. They came back recently in 2013, 2014. They received approval from the Design Review Board for a new revised project. Before, it used to be a two-story. It's now currently a three-story proposal. The square footage is minor modifications. Certainly, the design did modify. It's now currently a contemporary, modern design. It was approved by the Board. We have now prepared an addendum for the environmental that was originally adopted by the original Design Review Board that reviewed the project. I've also included that in your packet. No significant changes, mainly the site planning, of course, the height, because there's now a three-story, and the aesthetics. So those were the main changes. The M&amp;D pretty much, again, stayed the same with the exception of those items. Now going back as to why you have a revised staff report. Again, to reiterate, one of them being because we have the addendum now included in the staff report, whereas before we did not for the per sequel regulations. And also, after further research with our legal department, it was determined that this project could not be recommended for denial on the basis of state... Excuse me. On the basis of legal grounds. And I will defer to our legal department regarding that.
Thank you, Chair Landrigan and members of the Planning Commission. After research into the state law that governs extensions of tentative tract maps, the legal... The city attorney's office determined that it's governed by government code 66452.6E. That basically gives this body, the Planning Commission, discretion to grant any number of extensions that cannot exceed a total aggregate of six years. So this is their first extension that is not... That isn't an automatic legislative extension. This is the first extension that this project has requested, the first discretionary extension. And there actually are no legislative findings that you're required to make. There's sort of a void in legislation in that area. But in further research of case law and other provisions of the MAP Act, we've determined that there has to be a reason, a very good reason, based on substantial evidence, such as if this project weren't consistent now with the general plan, if the original project had changed so much that now, you know, we couldn't make the original findings for the first tentative tract map. So consulting with the planning department, none of those conditions have changed significantly. And so we had to revise the staff report. The reasons that the planning commission... Or, sorry. The reasons that the planning department recommended denial initially in the initial staff report were not legally supportable. So we recommended taking those out.
All right. Thank you. And I failed to open the public hearing, and I'm sorry. It is now officially open.
This is his letter he worked on.
Is there any comment from commissioners before I ask the applicant to come forward?
Madam Chair, I do. What happens with the development impact fees and car fees and so forth?
They are a pipeline project. We did the analysis and determined they are a pipeline project, so they will pay the reduced development impact fees.
Which is how much?
I don't know the exact amount. I will defer to planning staff on that.
I know the new ones are about $20,000, I believe, per unit, if I'm not mistaken. However, the original fee, I'm not 100% sure.
Do they fall in at $6,000 or the $13,000?
Probably the 13, but I would have to verify.
There was timing associated with the ramping up of the impact fees. I don't know when this particular one got approval, but it would fall... If it's a pipeline project, it would fall in the tiered.
And also, if you've visited the site, you'll notice that it already has a development of the parking structure that's taken place. So certainly, we don't want to continue to have a project that's just half-built. So in the best interest of the welfare of the community and safety, it would be in everyone's best interest to have this project continue moving forward as it relates to the construction as well of the project.
And if I'm... I'm so sorry to interrupt. If I may add something. I did not mean to imply that the Planning Commission does not have discretion to deny this extension. I just wanted to clarify that we could not... The legal department could not advise the planning staff to make a recommendation of denial. However, if you find substantial evidence in the record that this project does not comply with the general plan or development or zoning or conditions in the neighborhood have changed so much that this original tentative tract map approval should not be extended, then you certainly have the discretion to deny the extension. I was just explaining why we changed the recommendation. I just wanted to clarify that.
And just to follow up on what Yvette just mentioned, we've also included revised motions in your packet now. So you will notice that there are still three. Motion to continue, motion to approve with the addendum that was added on, and also motion for denial. And as it relates to modify... Or changes to the environment, certainly that area does not appear to have had major significant changes within the last 10 years. If you were to compare it to other parts of the city, for example, the downtown area, which certainly has. So as far as the developed environment, it appears that it has relatively stayed in substantial conformance as it was 10 years ago.
Further questions for staff?
How long is the extension that is being sought?
He is requesting, according to his letter dated March 23, he has requested to September 30 of 2017. Again, I don't honestly know if that's realistic, because there's still... He's still in the plan check process, and there's still construction, substantial construction that needs to be performed. And he needs to get an approval from the planning division once the project itself is actually complete. So there are inspections involved. Before we can even sign off on the final map, we have to make sure that there's clearance from all the inspections, including design review. We had recommended potentially two-year... A two-year extension, assuming that's a little more realistic. But again, I'll defer to the applicant, since he's here on the property owner, if the September 30, 2017, is realistic to complete the project.
Commissioners, any further? All right. Thank you. Mr. Marterosian, you have 15 minutes.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair and Commissioners. My name is Haik Mordirosian. I'm tract engineer. I was the original tract engineer who did this project 10 years ago, and we got the approval back in 2006. I'm pretty good recording my maps within that period of three years, but unfortunately, this is a kind of special case that prolonged our project all these years. At the time that we got our approval, the buildings were still in the plan check, and we couldn't get the building permit pulled on time. So by 2008, when we got our building permit, we are always down into the economic downturn. So the property owner had really a hard time obtaining his financials to do the construction. So after getting denial from all the banks, so he decided to do the construction by himself, I mean, using his funds. And he did the subterranean parking portion of the project. And then, I don't know how far he did go by that time and how long it took him to get his subterranean parking completed. And then meanwhile, that he was doing construction, he was approaching all this financial institute to get his loan. But any time that you do construction, in the middle of construction, the banks, they won't give you any loan. So he had a hard time obtaining any financing from the banks. So it took him almost three, four years, to the point that all his building application and permits was expired. So he had to go back again and redo all his plans. And finally, back in 2000, I think 13 or 14, he got a new architect onboard and started redrawing the plans. If this project was in the other city than... Rather than Glendale, we could get our map recorded prior even getting our building approved or finalized. But City of Glendale has a process that you have to go through all your inspections and getting your building semi-final or 99% final before they take the map to the council. So that was the whole process that it took my client to get his financial, and he had a hard time to get it. He's here, and he will give you more in detail how far he has to go to get his financial in order. As far as the conditions of the track, I mean, in that area, nothing has been changed within these last 10 years. I've done several projects there that everything is the same. The zoning is the same. The general plan is the same. So nothing has been changed to trigger the map that does not apply anymore. And besides, as council said, we never apply for extension from the city. All these extensions were automatically by estate, so we didn't have to do it until such a time that we had to get it requested from the city. So we are in your blessing. I mean, if you can extend this extension to such a time that he can finish his building and he can get the map recorded, we would appreciate it. If you have any question, I would be more than happy to answer.
You are in plan check right now, Mr. Marterosian?
Yes, we are in plan check. And he just told me that he's ready to pull his building permit and within, I don't know, a week or two weeks.
And then the loan has been approved already?
The loan is approved, waiting for the extension from the city. So he needs to show them some kind of...
Pending.
Showing some kind of paperwork from the city so they can fund it.
Normally, in this instance, the lender requires, says, "I need an extension for such and such amount of time." Have they?
I will refer to my client, because I didn't deal with the bank, so I don't know what exactly they asked.
Maybe we can ask your client.
Sure.
I have a question. I don't know who to ask. Maybe I can just direct it to you, sir. So with what we heard from staff, is it realistic, the time that has been put forward, September 27? Do you think that's a time that you'll be able to... Yes, please. Of course.
And please introduce yourself when you come up to the podium. Thank you, sir.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair and council members. I'm sorry. Your question again?
Robert, please introduce yourself.
Robert Pabayan. I'm the applicant.
Your question was, with the time extension of September 2017, do you see yourself this being enough time to actually complete this project? Or...
We're anticipating for it to be at least a 12-month project, yes. But initially, when like... When we're talking to the lenders, they're giving us an 18-month loan right now, and they also given us a six-month extension, just in case. There's weather problems. There's always something that, if it goes wrong, we need extensions. It's better to get the two years and complete it in a timely manner where we can do it properly, rather than rushing and having mistakes done.
So two-year would actually be 2018?
2018.
18.
Okay.
This past three months that I've been... After we applied, there's a few things that, you know, with the lenders that we've been talking to, and we've been going over things that it's more likely that we can go to 12 to 18 months. So another six months would be a good insurance. We have two private lenders right now. One commercial lender that is willing, because when you begin a construction, it's just everybody is worried about things that... Of liens, even though it's all paid off. Everything's paid off. They're still worried, and somebody will come back. Even a $2 lien, they don't want to deal with that. And I don't blame them, but that's the... Spectrum Bank was the first bank that approved the loan, and we started to commence, and FDIC stopped them and made... Forced them to sell. And five of us... There were five developers that we were blocked outside. And they pulled the money. And there's nothing we can do. We started using our own private funds, because there was a big hole in there already when the FDIC closed the bank. And this is in Monobello, the bank, just in case for reference.
Thank you.
Mr. Manukian? No questions?
No.
Mr. Astorian, you had a question? I'm sorry.
My question was answering the belated question that my fellow commissioner asked.
Is there further presentation that you would like to add to Mr. Marterosian?
No. The only thing is that we're... Waiting for the lenders to get some approvals so we can go forward. In fact, today, I talked to one of them this morning. They're just waiting, and we're waiting. I think we've got one where the structural's been signed off, so we're waiting till we can pull the permits probably within... Before end of the month.
Okay. If I may.
Please.
Now, the statement that was made by your architect, and perhaps he's not involved in the business end of it, was that the lend... This is the pending issue, the extension, that you are going to be able to get the approval.
Majority of it, yeah. They want this... Because they want this to be sold, like the condos to be sold. If they're not going to be sold, then they're worried about their... How are we going to pay them back? That's their main concern.
Okay.
So it is...
Yeah, I'm fine.
I do have one question. Does it state in the staff report that the extension is till September 30, 2017? I didn't see that.
No, only in the motion. Where did we put two years? The 2017 came from his...
His letter?
Oh, we left it blank. Okay.
It's blank.
Your motion is also...
You're wrong.
See?
You put the date in there.
Yeah, you have to put the date in there.
That's fine.
So your motion does not...
Oh, got it.
...back 2017.
Okay. All right. That was my question.
I take that back. I've been corrected by council. We left it intentionally blank in the motion.
Excellent. All right. Thank you.
So Madam Chair, I don't have a problem with moving the motion in favor of extension by 2018, March 31, 2018.
Should I close the public hearing first?
I just wanted to convey my sentence.
You want to continue it?
No, no, no.
I just wanted to convey my sentence to you.
All right. Thank you. All right. Gentlemen, further... Thank you very much.
Thank you for your time, Madam.
All right. I'm going to close the public hearing, and now we can deliberate.
I...
Gentlemen and ladies.
I'd like to make a motion to move and approve the extension to March 31, 2018.
13.
13. Yes.
13.
March 13, 2018.
Do I have a second?
Second.
May I have a roll call, please?
Planning Commissioners Astorian.
Aye.
Manukian.
Aye.
Shabazian.
Aye.
Chairperson Landrigan.
Aye. Thank you very much. So now we will continue to our next item, which is item number three.
Madam Chair, before you start, item number three, I have... I may have to recuse myself from deliberation and/or any kind of decisions on this item.
Would you like to talk to the city attorney first?
Well, yeah. Even... I just don't want to give even the perception of a conflict here. And I have to be vocal about it and tell you exactly why, and then I'll recuse myself.
All right.
And this is a piece of property that, a while back, I had an offer on for an investor. Nothing happened out of it, not for me, but for the investor. But nonetheless, I mean, I think that gives me enough grounds to recuse myself, because I know a lot about the property and so forth. I've done a lot of diligence on it, and there was an offer on it made by me and my company.
Excellent. Then I think we will excuse you. Thank you for that.
Thank you. Now, the protocol is that I leave.
Yes, correct.
Thank you.
So we will wait until that happens?
You'll come back.
Of course.
All right. Thank you. We'll re-resume. Item number three, tentative parcel map, GLN number 1632, case number PPM 13... I'm sorry. Location 611 North Brand Boulevard. And that would be Ms. Ast.
Thank you, Chair Landrigan, members of the Planning Commission. This parcel map application requests approval to subdivide one parcel into two, located at 611 North Brand Boulevard, for the purpose of selling off the northern parcel. The existing zoning of the property is located in our downtown specific plan, specifically the Gateway District. It is surrounded by other downtown specific plan zones to the southwest and the east, and the Ventura 134 freeway to the north. The site is currently about 5.4 acres in size. It's rectangular in shape and flat. It has three street frontages. Sanchez Avenue... Sanchez Drive to the north, Brand Boulevard to the east, and Doran Street to the south. It's developed... Currently developed with a 14-story, 390,586-square-foot office building, a one-story, 12,200-square-foot office building with a drive-through ATM, and a five-story parking structure with 1,250 parking spaces. So to describe a little bit about what the new parcels would look like and where they'd be located. Parcel one would be located on the north side of the site with frontage along Sanchez Drive and Brand Boulevard. And after a condition is executed that requires a dedication of 10 feet along the parcel that's adjacent to Sanchez Drive, this parcel would have an approximate area of one and a half acres. The lot line proposed between parcel one and parcel two would make the existing parking structure and the high-rise office tower non-conforming related to building and fire codes. At this point, there is no proposal... No development proposal for parcel one. But we have added a note on the tentative parcel map that marks an assumed property line, a minimum of 30 feet from the office tower and the parking structure, which would remove these potential building and fire code issues. This assumed property line could be removed if, in the future, development of parcel one and parcel two complies with all applicable codes at the time. And a condition has been included to require recordation of any easements necessary to comply with building and fire codes and any ADA requirements. Essentially, the tentative parcel map will separate the surface parking lot from the office tower and parking structure. It's anticipated that after the sale of parcel one, a future owner and developer will design a project to meet all code-required improvements for both parcels. Conditions of approval are added that require, again, that all parcels be code-compliant prior to approval of the final parcel map. What's then becomes the next parcel, parcel two, would be on the south side of the site with frontage on Doran and Brand Boulevard. It'd be approximately 3.6 acres in size. The existing office tower, the parking structure that would remain on parcel two would comply with all zoning code, downtown specific plan development standards, which include the floor area ratios and parking. So the Planning Commission is charged with ensuring that new lots are compatible with the surrounding neighborhood. Title 16 of our municipal code gives standards to evaluate an application. And basically, it says that the area, the width, the design of lots shall be determined by the average size of dimensions of lots within the same zone and general plan designation within a distance of 500 feet from any subject split. So the proposed lots... Of these two lots have an average size of 115,000 square feet. The average lot area within 500 feet of the... The average lot area within 500 feet of the downtown specific plan gateway zone is 52,852 square feet. So at 115,000 square feet, this is almost twice the average size of lots in the vicinity. Both parcels keep a rectangular shape, consistent with the existing lot pattern, and each parcel has generous frontage along east-west Sanchez Drive and Doran Street, as well as frontage along Brand Boulevard. The project complies with all zoning requirements and is consistent with the general plan element and the downtown specific plan as outlined in the table in your staff report. The site is physically suitable for a potential development. The parcel map will subdivide one lot into two mixed-use lots for the purpose of developing a future commercial or mixed-use development. So based on this evidence, staff recommends that the Planning Commission approve tentative parcel map number 1632 with the attached conditions.
I'm again opening the public hearing for this. Any questions, staff? I do, then. Ms. Asp, am I correct in the fact that this tentative tract, if it is approved with these two parcels, cannot have any variances added to it? Are they included in the tentative tract map?
There are variances from zoning standards.
Right.
There are no variances from zoning standards with this, with this tentative parcel map. So, and as I tried to say, I...
In the future, would there be the opportunity to, to seek a variance?
Certainly. That's every, that's every property's...
One has that right.
Right, to secretly from zoning code.
Even if easements and all are recorded in the property recordation?
Even if easements are recorded.
Okay. So if you were going to ask of variance from easements, they can be removed?
The variances would provide relief from zoning code requirements. It would not provide, there's no mechanism to provide relief from any building, fire, ADA requirements. That's a completely separate code, and the variance process would not be applicable.
All right, thank you. Further questions from the Commissioners?
Questions from me?
All right, I have four requests to speak. Is there an order you would like me to go in? I actually have Kevin Hanson first. Would that be?
Well, this is Kevin. I'm the applicant, and we just put in our speaker parts in case there were questions or people wanted us to say anything further in the way of...
Are you Anne?
I have to go up.
Anne, why don't you do the presentation? Thank you. Anne, what is your name?
Anne Gray. I'm with Gray Real Estate Advisors on the applicant on the project, on behalf of the property owner. And I wasn't sure that we were going to be making presentation, but I'm happy to give you a little background on the parcel. The building that was there was built in 1972, and the intention for the site was that it would be basically twin towers that were served by this one gigantic parking structure. So one of the towers was built, and the other tower was not built. But, so we have the big parking structure and the 14-story tower. The current owners had it for a couple of years. It was a distressed property. Their bylaws actually do not allow them to develop. They are strictly a financial investment company that owns and operates. So in order for this parcel to be developed, it has to change ownership. So their intention is not to develop it. So part of our request here is strictly to create the property line that allows the property to be developed in the future by some other owner. And so we've been, so our intention is that it basically would be just a blank piece of land. It would get sold, and then the city would have complete discretion over what would be built there in the future, under all of your standard codes and regulations, and subject to all of the easements and encumbrances that are placed by, by you tonight.
All right, thank you. Any questions of the applicant? All right, thank you very much, Ms. Gray. Jennifer, would you care to speak? Sean? And Kevin? Please just give us your name, and thank you very much.
I'm Kevin Hanson with L&amp;R Property Corporation, and we are the, we represent the ownership. We are what's called a special servicer, and owners are potentially hundreds of bondholders. Perhaps you might own one of the bonds. So this property was previously owned by McGuire, and as Anne explained, they built the office building, the parking structure, with the intention to build another one. And if you look at the office building, it has that little piece sticking out. That was meant to be a connecting corridor for the two buildings. Well, McGuire defaulted on the mortgage. We foreclosed on that on behalf of the bondholders. And our mandate, mandated by the Internal Revenue Service, is that we have to enhance the value to the best of our abilities, and then we have to sell it, which includes the vacant land as well as the building. So ultimately, we have to sell the building, too. So that vacant land is not needed for the existing office building. The market is nowhere close to justifying an additional office building. So we want to subdivide this parcel and sell it. The most likely buyer would be someone who wants to develop it with hotel, perhaps restaurant, but ideally hotel. That's what we would like to, and we do care what gets developed, because it will impact our building, too. So we've put this parcel map together with the help of our staff and your staff, and I actually have a question. I'm confused about something that you said. The 30-foot area, and I fully understand you can't have buildings within 30 feet unless you take proper measures. I think the property line of the new parcel goes right up along the garage, and then the 30 feet would be an easement that you could not build in, as opposed to a setback of the property line.
It's, it was designed to be an assumed property line so that, for that exact reason, to not, to not violate any building code, fire code, ADA code.
So the property line, am I correct, will go, as it's shown on the map, along the garage?
Correct, right. It wouldn't affect the, you know, the ultimate square footage. It is just sort of this, this line that could be moved if, if things were developed in a way that could solve the fire, building code, ADA issues.
And the line that could be moved is the...
Is the assumed, is the assumed, is that assumed line, correct?
Okay.
But it can't go into the building, in other words.
Right, I understand. When we sell the property, we want to make sure that we know where the property line is. So property line, as I consider it, is across the...
It's basically adjacent to the, to the parking structure.
Okay. And then we have a 30-foot setback, unless proper steps are taken to make sure it complies with...
Correct. And how, whatever vehicle does that, whether it's an easement or an actual development, will, will play out.
Or change to the structures.
Correct.
Yeah, okay, I got it.
But that will be on title now, right?
Yes.
That assumed property line, yes.
So the would-be buyer would be on notice that I am buying this building. That's the property line, but there's, the city has a 30-foot play ribbon to make it...
Yeah, and I think the map shows that easement area.
Yes.
Right.
Yes, it does.
It does.
Okay. So that's what we're looking to do. We think that that will be an enhancement to the community, the city, to have a nice hotel there. It'll be an enhancement to the building, and we're hoping that guys approve it. Any questions?
I don't, are there further?
No questions.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you very much, Mr. Hanson. All right, I'm closing the public hearing. Commissioners, any discussion?
I don't have my motion, but I motion to approve this tentative parcel map number GLN 1632.
We need to, why don't you go ahead and read verbatim the top paragraph?
Motion is Exhibit 1.
Thank you.
Yes.
I didn't have it here. So I move to approve this, let's see. The project is category exempt from CEQA as a Class 15 minor land division exemption pursuant to State CEQA Guidelines, Section 15315, because services are available to the site, access is available, and the property has not been subdivided within the last two years. The division is in conformance with the general plan. No variances are requested at the parcel, and the parcel does not have an average slope greater than 20%, and that upon consideration of tentative parcel map number GLN 1632, and after reviewing the records, files, reports, and all documentary evidence submitted with regard to set tentative parcel map, that tentative parcel map number GLN 1632 is hereby approved, subject to compliance with the 19 conditions listed below, and the Planning Commission hereby makes each and all of these following findings of fact.
Do I need to read everything?
No.
All right. May I have a second?
I second.
May I have a roll call, please?
Planning Commissioners Manukian.
Aye.
Shao Bazian.
Aye.
And Chairperson Landrigan.
Aye. The project is approved. Thank you very much. So...
Commissioner Astorian? No.
Ask Mr. Ast, if you see Mr. Astorian after, will you ask him to join us?
Oh, he's gone home. He's long gone.
Has he gone home?
Is there anything else on agenda that we need him for?
Well, I think he left his materials here, but...
Oh, he did.
Planning Commission members, Mr. Commissioner Astorian said that he was going to be here, and there he is.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. To continue with our agenda, community development department updates.
There are no, there are no updates at this time?
All right. Any comments from Commissioners?
No comments.
None.
Nobody's going to mention a taste of Glendale tonight?
I am going. I don't know if anyone is going.
So maybe you will see some of us there. There are no comments. We are adjourned.
Yes, we are.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.